Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the common council at the order, and I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Vatali.
Here.
Ten present.
We have a quorum. If you are able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Weigel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move on to item D on our agendas this evening. We have several public hearings, six in total. I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
Orders to amend section 1901 of the West Alice Revised Municipal Code relative to rezoning 6604-20 West Mitchell Street from I-1 to C-3.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to staff, Mr. Scher.
Thanks, Mayor. The first hearing, we're not going to take, we're recommending council not take action upon. The planning commission had held this item at their February meeting, and therefore, just by state law, to, for council not to act on this tonight, and instead just to place it on hold until a future date after planning commission does, does vote on it. So this, but we will, we will conduct the hearing. So the, the subject matter here is regarding a property at 66th and Mitchell, also known as the Higgins property, and it's owned I-1, light industrial. A majority of the rest of the property around it, properties around it are zone C-3, as we'll see in a minute. Just some context photos here. This is a little bit dated photographs of the Lofts Apartments by Mandel are going up in this picture, just to the northwest, and then north of that is Makers Row across from our farmer's market. So with that, just another plan view of the Makers Row and Lofts Apartments, north of the Higgins property here at 66 Mitchell. Again, the property is owned I-2, the surrounding area is zone C-3. The comp plan that we have guides, leading towards commercial reuse, and the land use in this case, the purple area is actually mixed use, land use category, and commercial zoning does, is compatible with mixed use, land use. So our comp plan as a guide is suggesting that this property be zoned, rezoned C-3, like the remainder of the properties to the north and west, and just a zoning map of the current zoning, and we, again, we like to go to the C-3 zoning district. So planning commission has, has met, they've held action on this at the February 22nd meeting. There has been proper notice, a class two notice published in the official paper. Property owners within 200 feet have been notified via mail, and we'll just recommend holding this, this evening. Plan commission's next opportunity to consider this and make it, take an action will be on March 22nd, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Are there any questions from the council at this time? Seeing none, are there any questions from the audience at this time? All right. Then we will close public hearing number one, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
Resolution for a conditional use permit for Helium, a proposed instruction training use at 6675 West National Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thanks, Mayor. Helium is a proposed yoga studio that's received accolades recently in the Shepherd Express, being one of the best in the metro area. They're interested in the property, just showed a little bit here ago, the Sona Lofts property. The Sona Lofts building is an apartment building with a small, a couple of small commercial opportunities within that building. This would be on the ground floor, on the south end of the, of the Mandel Lofts property, and this is a sort of an interior view of the courtyard and the proximate location of, of where that yoga studio be located. It'd be about 2,200 square feet. The property is zoned C-3. The owner of the property is the Mandel Group, and then Robin, Robin Lux is the operator of the, of the yoga. The reason why this requires a public hearing is that there's the number of people, if it were less than 16 persons, it would be just considered permitted by right, but because there's going to be potentially more than 16 persons in class, class sizes, that's the purpose for the conditional use public hearing this evening. Just another view. And just a little bit about the floor plan and the use, you know, the, the studio space, again, about 2,100 square feet, and they'll have the yellow areas of studio space for classes, there'd be a couple of restrooms within the, within the facility, storage area, changing areas, reception lobby, waiting area, and then in-person and online classes. They offer hot, gently heated, and non-heated classes, different types of yoga, and planning commission has recommended approval back on January 25th. We've received no objections to date.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the common council on public hearing number two? Seeing none, are there any questions from the members of the audience on public hearing number two? All right, we'll close our second public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number three.
Resolution for a conditional use permit for Dunham Auto Sales, a proposed light motor vehicle sales use at 6047 West Beloit Road.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thanks, Mayor. Dunham's Transmission has been a longstanding business at the intersection of Beloit and about 60th, 60th Street, and they have their routine transmission repair shop. What they're looking to do here is sell cars from within the building. Vehicle sales is a conditional use, and if it's done within the building, not outside, but within the building, it can be done without other stipulations that are typically required of car dealerships like one acre lot size and 20% landscaping and so on. So in this case, the Dunham's repair shop will continue to operate. They do, however, from time to time, have a number of cars that people either walk away from or aren't interested in repairing, and they, they end up with them, they're looking to repair those vehicles, transmissions or what have you, and then sell them from within the building. The hours of operation really aren't changing, they're 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There's no interior or exterior changes planned to the site, however, planning commission has recommended a few site improvements, we'll get to those second, in a bit. The area that would be, would be used for vehicle sales would be within the building, roughly about 2,300 square feet in, in this area that's outlined here. This is sort of the interior view of that, that portion of the building. It's, right now, it's sort of a staging area for vehicles, they have garage door access inside and in, and out of the building, and it would be used for car sales of up to five vehicles. Planning commission has recommended some additional landscaping along the street frontages of Beloit, similar to what you see across the street here, could be, could be done in a similar fashion on the south side of that property, or north side of that property. Also a four-sided refuse enclosure, and then removing an old signpost. The conditional resolution, just a couple highlights, it's indoor car sales only, or vehicle sales only. There's a capacity limitation, no more than five vehicles being sold at any one time from, within the building, and then there's a landscaping requirement, and then this conditional use is non-transferable. In many cases, they are transferable, but it's a, it's a discretionary call for the council. If you want it to be non，在, or transferable, you could, but in this case, staff is recommending that be non-transferable. In other words, it can't continue on with the property, it just, it's for this current property owner, and if the property ownership changes, then they would have to come back and reapply. Planning commission has recommended approval at February planning commission meeting, and there have been no objections received to date.
Thank you. Any questions from the council on public hearing number three?
Mayor Devine.
Alderwoman Keen.
Steve, you said sometimes they have vehicles that they are able to sell, which is why they're doing this. Where, where do they currently keep those vehicles, or are they not? Are they currently keeping them outside, and now they'll move them inside, or?
Right now, they don't sell cars, and so they're, they're applying, really, the conditional uses for the purpose of, of selling cars from within the building. Yeah.
Okay.
So they would need, they would need to be licensed through the state of Wisconsin with a dealer's license and so on, so the first, they have to get the zoning measure taken care of, and then once that's done, then the license from the state may be issued for the vehicle dealership.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Devine.
Alderwoman Grisham.
Just to piggyback what Alderwoman Keen said, and that was one of the questions I was going to ask, that overflow of parking, is there a stipulation as to how many vehicles they can house within that property, outside of the property? Would it impact whatever permitted use they have now? Because we see a lot of these used car lots and otherwise, even though they're not going to be a used car lot per se, but if they are working on cars to get them up and running, they're going to have to house them somewhere in the interim, so rather than seeing an overflowed lot of vehicles that look unattended.
I think this just, from my understanding, works right into their workflow currently. It's not going to be any additional intensification in terms of hurting their, the customers, you know, location where they park their customers' vehicles for transmission repair. This is really going to be sort of a seamless workflow where they're just, while they are adding the, the car sales, it just, it's sort of works in part with, as a, you know, a complement to their, to their existing repair business.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Steve, a question. So at any given time, they'll only have for sale signs on five cars.
Right.
They may have other cars that they would plan to sell. These five cars are all inside, behind a glass window, I assume. Is it a giant garage door? How do people test drive these cars without them having to shuffle everything, you know? I'm just wondering if they say, ah, we got two guys coming later on, we're going to leave this car sitting outside overnight because someone's going to test drive it tomorrow anyways. Personally, I don't have a problem with the car sitting outside or outdoor sales. I understand we don't want it to be a used car lot, but if this truly is going to be only, all the cars for sale will be kept indoors in what looks like a showroom, I guess, sort of. Is that, is that building big enough that they can just drive them in and out that easily? I've never been there, so.
Yeah, it, it does have an open workspace, you know, the shop being, I don't know if you can see the cursor here, but behind this black truck, and then there is an overhead door here and here, so there, there is access inside, in and out of the building from the east elevation. I mean, I guess if someone did want to come and test drive a car prior to buying it, they could, they could do that. I mean, I suppose if anybody comes and gets their transmission done, is probably going to drive away, but yeah, so.
Just, just so it doesn't turn into something that they've not agreed to. I understand that this is what they're going to agree to, indoors only, but if I drive by there on a Tuesday afternoon, I see three cars with for sale signs on them, I'm going to say, oh, people are test driving them anyways, and what's the point?
Yeah. Yeah, it, it's not intended to be that, you know, kind of the typical car lot that you see, you know, Greenfield Avenue or something like that. This is much more.
But they will be selling cars, not just ones that they end up owning because the owner walked away from, or owed them money or something, so they, they may be buying cars on the private market or going to auction also, like used car dealers typically do, where there's no, there's no prohibition of that. We don't care where they get the cars from, they're only going to be selling five at a time.
Right, that could, that could happen. I mean, but they're going to be capped at the five tops. If, if there were to be a problem in the future as well, I mean, you know, it certainly could come through our, you know, code enforcement process and notice and order if they don't comply, it could come back to the Public Safety Committee for a hearing and, you know, possibly termination of the conditional use.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vatali.
Yeah, I've got to put my words in, that's my district.
You got some catching up to do.
Catching up, you're right. I apologize for that. But really, in fairness, first of all, there's a railroad a little bit west of that, then across the street there is, you know, business places, really, to me, it doesn't really inconvenience any residential anyway, and then again, it's not much, much of a space of a parking lot there, really. If you, once they start putting a few cars, you know, I mean, that, you know, between the building across, so, or next door, I mean, to me, I mean, if, if they get the license to, to do business on inside, I think for them it'd be foolish to, so if it happens occasionally to, to one or two cars outside, to me, it's not a big issue, really. You know, when we have on a city street, people put up sign to sell their cars, you know, so to me, it's not an issue.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? All right. Is there anybody from the audience with questions or comments on public hearing number three? Okay, we will close public hearing number three, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number four.
Resolution for a conditional use permit for Chase Bank, a proposed neighborhood service with accessory drive-through service at 2678 South 100 Naye Street.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thanks, Mayor. This is the former Boston Market. Chase Bank is going to be renovating the building for a, a bank with a drive-through. The bank is a permitted use by right, the drive-through triggers the conditional use hearing, and the hours of operation are pretty much banker's hours, and then the zoning is C-4, regional commercial, and has indicated that the drive-through is what's triggering the conditional use hearing. A few site improvements, the driveway along Highway 100, which is located centrally right now, right about here, is going to be closed, and then a new opening further north, away from the intersection, a little safer, and then additionally, they're going to be reducing the number of parking stalls from about 39, current parking stalls, down to about 25, adding ADA, updated ADA parking and access to the front of the building, as well as connection from the public right of way. There will be cross-access maintained between this property and Target to the, to the east, and then also some landscaping improvements around the perimeter of the site, and the drive-through will be located just here on the north or side. The pole sign in the corner is going to be removed, and a new monument sign would be replaced at the southwest corner. The building will be, will no longer look like a Boston Market, the new Chase look features replacing some of the exterior insulation finish system, EFIS, with fiber cement material, some other masonry products on the, on the lower extremities of the building. The drive-through being on the north side, then the front customer entrance on the, on the west side. The rooftop units will be screened from view as well. Planning commission recommended approval in February, and then the process has gone through public notice. No, no objections. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council on public hearing number four? Seeing none, are there any questions, comments from the audience on public hearing number four?
Resolution for a conditional use permit for Fire Cycle Fitness, a proposed instruction training use at 1468 South 84 Street.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. So we moved from yoga at Mandel to spinning classes at Elman 84. Ogden Group is the owner of this property at roughly 84th and Greenfield, this is a new address, and Fire Cycle Fitness, David Curtis is going to be the operator of the business and owner of the business on the ground floor. It's roughly about 3,300 square feet, and again, instructional training classes of over 16 persons do require conditional use public hearing. So it is occupying an unoccupied space currently within the ground floor, and then the hours are 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and then, you know, roughly Saturday is a little bit reduced from 8:00 to 12:00, and then there will, could be special events as needed by appointment and so on for private classes. The location of the, of the space within the building, there's no site changes proposed. The property is well landscaped and improved as a result of the, the redevelopment, the apartments. A little closer look at the floor plan within that 3,300 square foot space, you can see the exercised areas, bathrooms, locker rooms, and so on for changing, and basically your typical state-of-the-art, you know, fitness center, where with class sizes of over, over 16 persons. Planning commission has recommended approval in February, and there have been no objections to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any alderpersons have questions or comments on public hearing number five?
Mayor Devine.
Alderwoman Grisham. I'm sorry, Keen.
Um, Steve, for, is this open to the public, or just those that live in the apartments?
It'll be open to the public, yeah.
And then where would it be parking in there? Is there a lot that they would park in that's designated for folks specifically for the classes, or would it be street parking?
There will be off-street parking, you know, there are a handful of parking stalls right along 84th Street here, but then there's also additional surface parking to the south, about, I want to say about 25 or so stalls to the south of the building, so that would accommodate. Additionally, there, there would be on-street parking on Orchard Street if necessary, 83rd Street. 84th Street, I, I think is maybe a little bit difficult to park on, not, not so comfortable.
Right.
But, so I think 83rd or Orchard would be better opportunities for street parking, and then easily walk up along the sidewalk to the, to the front of the building.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Just a comment, I have a little concern that the cyclists will be staring at Big Deal Burgers and Custer the whole time that they're riding, and maybe that'll be their inspiration.
Right.
But I guess that would be my, my, just, that's my comment.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience?
I just wanted to.
If you could just come up to the microphone, please. And, I'm sorry, David, you got to hit the green button there.
It's right in the middle, the little person. Yeah.
All right, there we go. I just wanted to say hello, introduce myself. My name is David Curtis, and I'll be the owner at Fire Cycle Fitness, and mostly I just kind of wanted to address the public because a lot of people don't know about spinning, but more so than anything, we're just excited to bring something that's really inclusive and really diverse, so we'd like to kind of share that message and put it out there for everyone. I've been in the industry for 12 years now. I've lived in Los Angeles, and New York, and Detroit, a couple different states, and so I'm just really excited. I think that this is going to be really great for West Dallas, and there's definitely not anything like it in the state, so I'm, I'm super humbled and grateful to bring this to what, I live in West Dallas now as well, so I'm just excited to bring something to the city that I think is going to be good for us, so.
Mr. Scher. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the audience? All right, then we will close public hearing number five, and I will ask the clerk to read our final public hearing, item six.
Resolution to approve the vacation and discontinuance of a portion of public right-of-way near 92nd Street and West Cleveland Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a small portion of city right-of-way fronting both 92nd Street and Cleveland Avenue. It abuts three properties, 9131 Cleveland, which is the liquor store and hair salon, and then 9119 and 9109, which are residential duplex properties along, affronting Cleveland Avenue. Just some images of, of both, of all three of those properties, and a closer view of what would be vacated, that's in the yellow dashed area, and I guess the question would be, you know, anytime we're, we, we deal with a vacation or discontinuance, it's like, what is the public purpose of the right-of-way that we're, that we're considering to, to vacate, and they're really, as far as we can tell, and talking with engineering and public works, there really isn't a, a reason to maintain this as city right-of-way, there isn't a future public purpose for right-turn lanes or expanding Cleveland or 92nd Street. The city, in fact, is subject to maintaining these areas, and some of the property owners have actually made improvements, actually all of the property owners have made improvements within this right-of-way. The liquor store and hair salon benefit from a parking lot, an off-street parking lot. The residential property owners have landscape improvements, I think, that they've made within the, within the right-of-way area, they also benefit from access, driveway access from Cleveland Avenue, so there is a process of vacating portions of street or alleyways, in this case, street right-of-way. This has been introduced to council back on January 10th. We've served notice to the abutters mid-January, and then on the 25th, we had a planning commission meeting. Planning commission recommended that council vacate this right-of-way, so we've conducted a number of, you know, public hearing notices and contacted the abutters, and here we are at tonight's public hearing. Our engineering department has prepared this, this drawing, which shows a little bit more technical view of what would be, what would be vacated, and then if vacated, that property then is then attached to those private property owners and becomes taxable property. So we have a planning commission recommendation and conducted our public hearing, so that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions on public hearing number six from the common council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Steve, does the expansion of these residential lots allow them to build bigger buildings, expand their buildings, or add, say, an ADU kind of in the front, or a garage in the front, and convert a garage to an ADU in the back? Is that, I mean, is that with a lot?
Possible, yeah. All of that, yeah, with, I mean, not only, you know, in their current condition, they could, they could expand, they could put a accessory dwelling unit on their, on their properties now if they wanted, but, but this, you know, with a larger lot area, it would, in essence, give them a little more room to expand if, if so desired.
I mean, but certainly within the bounds of our lot coverage rules and all that other stuff.
Right, yeah.
So this would actually open up an opportunity for those property owners to make real taxable improvements to their.
That's true.
Yes, they're going to be paying the property taxes on this new land they own now, but it's not a lot.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the members of the audience on public hearing number six? Yep, just please give us your name and address.
My name is Gretchen Davies. I am the owner of the Middle Peace 9119/9121, and I'm not objecting to this. I've been taking care of it for decades, I've never gotten any assistance in my new driveway or anything else, but on the street side of some trees, there is a big cement-covered hole for fiber optics, and whomever owns those fiber optics, I don't know what company it is, they come in every summer and tear it up and do something with their fiber optics. The city has never come in and, and done any of the grass, I'm the one that's redone the grass. So if this is going to happen, I'd love to have that off my property. That's just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions on public hearing number six this evening? All right, then we will close our final public hearing, and we will move on to item E on the agendas, which is citizen participation. Here, the council may receive information from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Each speaker must announce their name and address, sign in at the podium, and limit their comments to one statement of no more than five minutes. The council cannot take action on topics raised by the speakers, nor will they discuss the topics with the speakers. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation. We will move on to item F. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on the middle, in the middle of page number two on the agenda. Moving on to the mayor's report, just one thing I want to touch on once again, I did this once in winter already, but we've had a couple of snow and storm incidents since we last met, and I just want to once again thank and commend our DPW crews for handling the storms, the blizzards, the ice storms, the sleet, everything that was thrown at them, and still keeping garbage and recycling on track at the same time. I know that our community and our businesses really are appreciative of their efforts and the long hours and the hard work that they put in. That does conclude the mayor's report this evening. We'll move on to item H, which is the alderperson's reports. Are there any reports from the alderpersons? Seeing none.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of February 7th and February 23rd of the common council meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any changes or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. We have nothing understanding committee reports, so we'll go right to item K.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I believe there's some changes to the agenda on, under item K. I'll ask the clerk, and she would please read those.
For item number 11, the recommendation should be to place on file instead of adopt. That's the only change. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless there's any objections from any of the council members, I would move that the items, item K on the agenda be approved as submitted.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess.